Stop this foolishness. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and zoning Commission to order. For the record, today's date is February 27th, 2023. My name is Richard Parker. I'm the Chair of PNC. And I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. I ask that you please turn on all electronic devices before the meeting begins. So if you have a phone or anything like that, please make it silent for this meeting. So this is a public meeting, and it's being recorded. If you'd like to speak on any matter that comes before us tonight, you'll get a chance. Our time limit for comments is three minutes. And then we ask that you please do not repeat comments made by others. If somebody makes a comment, it would be one comment per item. My的意思是，don't repeat the same thing. We are elected officials appointed by the City Council. We're an advisory board to the City Council, and we normally make recommendations. The City Council makes all legislative decisions for Burlington and has the final authority to rezone appropriately. Now, five members make up a quorum. Conrad, would you please call the roll?
Is he Chair Parker?
Present.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Present.
Member Beasley?
Present.
Member Black?
Present.
Member Rann?
Here.
Member Joan Zek Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Radar?
Absent.
Ms. Wright is an alternate who was not called in. So Heather was Miss Galvin.
Okay, absent.
And we have Conrad Medo, the Planning Manager, and Jamie Lawson, the Planning Director. Can we establish a quorum, Conrad?
Do you have a quorum, sir?
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of minute from our last meeting. December 19th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Subtle.
We have a motion to add a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Beasley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I mean, opposed. All right. Let's go into our rezonies. Our first item for rezoning, item number three on your packet. Mr. Rob Sessom, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from Light Industrial Allied to General Business Limited Use, GB-LU. Property is located on the north side of North Meven Street, east of the intersection of South Graham-Hubdel Road and North Meven Street, address as 202 North Meven Street, and consisting of Alloence County Tax Identification Number 171022. Now, does anyone here have a conflict with this item tonight?
No.
No.
No conflict. All right. Then I'll ask a representative for this project to please come forward and present their request. Please state your name and your address.
In my address?
Yep.
Fantastic. I'm Andrea Gonzalez. I work with Rob Sessom. We work out of Charlotte, North Carolina. Is that okay with the address, or do you need?
Sure, Charlotte. That's fine.
Okay, fantastic. And we are looking forward to the rezoning of the parcel as described, from Light Industrial to the General Business Limited Use. We are an affordable housing developer, and we're looking to develop a 56-unit apartment, multifamily use complex there. Here to answer any questions that you may have?
And what's your name again, sorry?
Andrea Gonzalez. I work with Rob Sessom.
Andrea?
Yes, Andrea. It's spelled a little uniquely. It has an extra E in there, and it's haunted me my whole life.
Okay.
It's a family name.
All right. That's fine. Does anybody on the commission have any questions concerning this request?
Isn't that part of the, used to be the Fairchild Runway? Has there, should be rent?
Yes, yes, that lovely, that is part of the old Fairchild Runway, right?
I'm not familiar. I'm not.
It is. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, question. How many floors is this going to be?
Three floors. It'll be, there's gonna be two buildings where we, well, I should say, two resident buildings and one clubhouse. The building in the back will be three stories. The one facing the street would be two on the ends and the third, three in the center to kind of help with the elevation to kind of make it more of a community.
Will there be elevators?
No.
Will there be?
Is this affordable housing? Yes.
When you say affordable, what is meant by affordable?
Sure, it's income qualified. So how it works is we use the low-income housing tax credit issued by the North Carolina Housing Authority, and it's income qualifying. You have to make under a certain amount to be able to qualify to live there, and you have to make a certain amount to be able to afford the rent. So it's an income qualification.
Okay. So it is truly affordable housing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Our target will be a mixture between, it's based on the area median income, and it's, our targets will be 60% of area median income and 40% of area median income.
Where else do you have developments?
We have over 15,000 units all across the southeast, from DC down to Savannah.
I'm worried about North Carolina. Where at?
Oh, in North Carolina, we, I mean, we're developing right now. We're building right now in Whiteville. We've got properties all over the state, from mountains to coasts.
So where you, where you're operating right now?
Yes.
Where? And you said Whiteville, but you said you're building. What do your developments look like? Where are they?
I guess I'm misunderstanding. When we build, we retain ownership for the life of the property. We'll have them in Charlotte, North Carolina. We have them here locally. We have them in Elkin. We, so I guess.
I guess he's asking, in case somebody wanted to visit one of your other properties and see what they looked like, if there was a location that you could point something to.
Sure, absolutely. I'd be happy to send you guys the.
You have a Burlington address, you said?
I don't have.
They will.
Okay, but nothing in Burlington yet?
Nothing in Burlington.
Okay. Where's your closest development?
Our closest development, I would, I mean, I'm happy to give that information.
Sure. Look, I love what you're doing. I just want to see what it looks like.
Oh, absolutely. No, and we're, I mean, we're an open book. We're pretty proud of what we do. We've been in business for quite some time, and we're, you know, we.
Sometimes we get artist renditions of what things will look like.
Sure, I mean, I have a site plan here that I'm happy to pass around.
Sure. Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I just was, and it doesn't have the actual building elevation. I was just under the impression it was.
Yeah, and just as a reminder to the Planning and zoning Commission members, nothing that's provided in the conceptual plan or site plan can be committed to.
Right, yeah.
This is a limited use rezoning application. In fact, the list of permitted uses that the applicant has requested are listed on the screen there. So it's not just limited, just so you're aware. It's not just limited to multifamily. There's actually, there are other options on the table, too, that they have also included in their request.
That's correct.
This is helpful, though.
It's just seeing what you want.
No, and I completely understand that. Our company is Fitchiric, F-I-T-C-H-I-R-I-C-K dot com. So if you want to look at any of our portfolios, it's there.
I love the affordable housing deal altogether.
Sure.
And this is great.
No, thanks. I'm happy to answer questions.
What aspect of what you have planned demands the rezoning?
I'm sorry?
It is now zoned Light Industrial.
Correct.
And wants to do a business?
Yes.
What aspect of that demands business?
Light Industrial doesn't allow for multifamily housing. So we would need, because of its 4.4 acres, we would need a median density which a general business allows for.
So the current penalty doesn't allow for multifamily? That is why they're making the request for.
General business, yeah.
Is the Dry Shred Restaurant, sounds like a best food, is that part of it?
It is not. So we're a multifamily developer, but who we're purchasing this from is a retail developer. We have to apply for the low-income housing tax credits with the state of North Carolina. To be able to apply for those tax credits, we have to rezone. So we can then get the tax credits that would allow us to be able to apply for these, to be able to build this development without the rezoning. But we also don't want to devalue the property from whom we're purchasing. We like to be good stewards of the land that we're trying to purchase from. So we understand that if we limit our seller to only multifamily, we kind of pigeonhole him into something that he's not familiar with.
But everything other than the multifamily dwelling is business, right? I mean, there are eight ones, but seven of them are upgrades to business.
Yes, or to retail, yes.
Is that the person you're buying this from?
It was consulted, it was consulted through the Realtor, from the seller, yes.
Okay. And what North Carolina? Why did you choose this property?
You know what? It is a fantastic property. For our clientele, it is on toilet transit. We think it's right across from the Walmart. It is, you know, it's kind of typically when we work with cities, how city planning usually works, that what we've done is is commercial, centralized with multifamily, and then residential. And this kind of mimics that city cleaning feel. And it's just, I think, really centrally located for this property. Because I think it's just, we're really excited about it, actually. I mean, it's a great location, especially with the bus stop right across the street.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, question, Ms. Galvin.
Yes?
How many rooms, bedrooms, or rooms apartments?
It's a great question. It'll be a mixture of ones, twos, threes, and fours, with the heaviest concentration in two bedrooms.
And who dictates the people that go in? That you've got a four-bedroom apartment servicing four individuals and not eight individuals?
Well, we, we income qualifier residents, we have to abide by all fair housing protocols on the home. But we have, we own our property management company, and so we do all of our, yeah, income qualifying through that process.
One more follow-up question. You say that you've done this throughout the East Coast. How long have y'all been in business?
I've.
I mean, I'm saying, what would we expect to see in 10 to 15 to 20 years from now at that location?
That's a great question, and it will continue to be affordable housing, and we will be managing it. We, I've been working with this company for a little over 10 years. We, but all properties that we do, we had, we put a land use restriction on it, and it is, it is for 30-year affordability, wait, use. You know, we pride ourselves in developing, holding, managing, and just really becoming a perfect community. It's a company's mission.
One follow-up again, then. One aspect, what do you look at as far as middle to, well, elementary to middle school to high school children in this product? What is your, what do y'all normally see as far as percentage-wise, roughly?
That's not something I can really speak to every, every development. It's different. This will be a multifamily, this will be family targeted, not senior. So we, families will be encouraged to apply.
Each apartment will have how many parking spaces?
I think we are currently, wait, two, my, my cheat sheet, please. Right now, we have, let's see here. Sorry, let's see here. We have 98 parking spaces. And that's four 56 units.
56 units?
Yes.
And you have 98?
Yes.
That's almost one and a half, I think. I'm just sitting there thinking, four bedrooms, good enough for cars.
Just so you, of the 56, only six of them would be four bedroom.
I'm sorry, let me see.
Would be four bedroom.
How many?
Six.
Six.
Six. Yes, if you want the breakdown, it's 10 one-bedrooms, 22 two-bedrooms, 18 three-bedrooms, and six four-bedrooms.
10 ones.
22 twos.
Okay.
18 threes.
Thank you.
And six fours.
So it's up about an inch, about four acres?
It is. It's a, it's an, I think, effective use. It's an effective use of the, efficient, I should say, use of the.
Are there any other questions? On your website, you said that you use green building techniques. You told your concern, aren't you fun of that, and I was asking, what? Frank Iver Corporation uses green building techniques. What do you do?
It depends, it differs in various areas. But in North Carolina, we use a, you know, we'll use a third-party rebuilding energy. So it's different with Energy Star, I'm trying to think, Energy Star appliances, Energy Star LED light bulbs.
HVAC systems? Plans for solar or?
No, not.
If you have the last some respects, you could.
What would the rents be per se to go to?
It is, I don't have the, I don't have the breakdown with me right at this moment, and happy to share that with you. But it's, it will be 60% of the area median income as dictated by the. So it is, we are regulated by, we are regulated, absolutely. It's not arbitrary by means.
So it's 60% of their income?
Of the area median income. So if the area, if the area median income, for simple math purposes, is 100,000, you would have, to qualify, you'd have to make under 60,000, but you would still have to be able to afford the rent. And how we, how we do that is making sure that your housing expenses is 30%.
Okay, that's what.
Yep, so you're not over.
30.
Yep, 30%. Inclusive of utilities, which we do accommodate that within the rent as well.
Any other questions?
Maybe a question for city staff. I was looking through the DDO just now, and I couldn't find anything on it. I know we have a residential density calculation limitation for the home residential zoning. Do we have something similar for apartment structures?
Yes.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it just here.
For what? For the zoning condition there?
For what that has in order?
It would cap at 24 units per acre.
15-seer is the minimum, but you can promptly start.
You're right, because it moved from 14 and a half in December to 15-seer.
Why aren't you going with the best going with 22, the expense?
Well, I mean, a lot of what, how a H-E-C system is sized is based on the square footage. So even if you get a more energy, a larger unit, you know, it's a delicate balance between dehumidification and conditioning, which we take into consideration with our mechanical needs.
Last chance for questions.
Mr. Black? Mr. Chairman, I don't know. I was just doing some quick math. If everybody had an apartment, had a room, had a car, they've got 132 cars and a place to put 56 of them. And of course, I know that's ridiculous. Not everybody that has a bedroom is going to have a car. But even if you cut that in half, that's 66 cars and 56 parking spots.
No, we have 98 parking spots.
98? I thought it was 56.
No, 56 units, but.
98 parking spots, okay.
Yeah, one and a half parking units.
Thank you. Good deal.
My experience is that even though you have so many apartments, there's always vacancies around your apartment.
You always have guests and family coming in and out, different shifts.
It works out, and we've been using that standard, one and a half, for years.
That is the requirement for our parking calculation.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Don't be moved. Nothing here.
Okay.
We're gonna, no, no, we're gonna ask the staff.
Okay.
Some questions.
Excellent.
Were there any phone calls concerning this rezoning?
We have not received any calls. There might be people in the audience who might have any questions.
Before we do that, does the staff have a recommendation?
Staff is recommending the rezoning request as it's consistent with the future land use designation that's used for the area.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this matter? Usually, there's 100 people.
Let's do it. Depending on.
So do you want to have anything to say about it? Okay. Okay, so now we've had a couple of comments. And I think the staff has given their recommendation. Is there a motion?
I have one.
What? You still have?
I make a motion to recommend the approval of a request to rezone the property from Light Industrial to General Business Limited Use, GB-LU. The property is located on the north side of North Meven Street, east of the intersection of South Graham-Hubdel Road and North Meven Street, address as 2002 Meven Street, and consisting of Alloence County Tax Identification Number 171022. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive planning calls for this area to have mixed use, to have mixed use uses.
Mm-hmm.
The request is compatible with the adjacent commercial uses. The action reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Is there a second? A second motion. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
If you go all for it.
Okay, what do we want?
Go ahead, roll call. Chair Parker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Member Beasley?
Yes.
Member Black?
Yes.
Member Rann?
Yes.
And Member Zek Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All votes in.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number four. How you say your last name? Well, I'm not ready for you yet. How you say your last name? Angelo. Agino, okay. Mr. Richard Angelo, applicant, to present a request to rezone property from Light Industrial to General Business Limited Use, GB-LU. Property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Graham-Hubdel Road and Henover Road, address as 804 South Graham-Hubdel Road, and consisting of Alloence County Tax Map Identification Number 1720001, excluding the existing area zone, conditional industrial CI, and the portion located within the city of Graham's jurisdiction. So before we get started with this one, does anyone have a conflict with this item? I do. I can't listen to this one or participate because I work for the owner of the property. So this will be a conflict for me, and I would turn the gavel over to Mr. Kirkpatrick to run this part of the meeting.
This'll go quick.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, and who is that under, Mr. Parker, please?
The Coors, Caroline Hoardry, Mill, thank you. I work for them. Continue, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Is anyone here speak on the property?
It's right behind you.
Parker?
Yes, I'll speak. Richard Angelo, Third Way of Housing, 463 Carolina Circle, Winston-Salem. We are basically, we have this parcel of land. We've historically have done half and half between historic buildings and new construction buildings. And we've continued to work in the Burlington and Graham Gibsonville market to figure out a lot of the historic bills themselves. And now we're finding a lot of these parcels of land that are not being used for their highest investment. And we have historically worked on doing residential apartments. The idea here is to change it from Light Industrial, because it's clearly been a vacant lot for quite a while, because Light Industrial was not the best use of this site. And so our proposal is basically to use this for multifamily apartments.
Question from the commission.
If it's an old mill, if it's a plant to have something, a loss or something that takes, architecturally takes that into account.
Actually, this is a lot now. It used to be a building, it was torn down, the foundation and the parking lot's still there. And so it's more of a urban-indoor property. So it's like doing historic building, but without the historic building. If that makes sense. We still have an existing neighborhood. We love this neighborhood. We've watched it over the last 10 years kind of evolve. And we like it, you know, based upon the park and all the stuff that's gone next door, the greenway that's coming in. At the same time, we have all the different schools that are right around the corner. We really like to get a path of some ways that we can end up not using it for getting to the schools. And I know that's important, a mix of what you guys have been working on related to vision for the overall area itself.
Where else do you have properties in Burlington or the?
Six blocks south of this, we actually have O'Naita Mill, which is.
Oh, really?
We did O'Naita Mill six years ago.
Okay.
We did it with the Burlington Housing Authority. And that was taking an old historic building that basically was driving down the neighborhood and basically bringing it back to life. We did that with Rehab Builders. My partners on working on this are Core Management, which has done quite a bit, the Food Port and everything else down here, as well as Rehab Builders, which did Mahos Re and others. So this is just the way we figure, well, how's another way that we get more apartments into this community? Because there's such a demand for apartments at this time for housing. And how do we get them to fit into these existing neighborhoods? And in reality, we like to do these urban-indoor properties because they're wonderful, because you have so many amenities that are so close, versus doing new construction. I usually say, I'll buy the Walmart, but this is kind of an odd one because the Walmart is actually in the port. But we don't like to do new land type of stuff. So for us, this is actually a great challenge.
So you're local?
We're local. We're local. We did a study for when we did O'Naita Mill, because the mayor of Graham asked how many people, you know, are basically people working for the bill, for building it, how much of that is local? And we did a circle around it. Within 40 miles was about 60% of our staff. So we had Bed and Bumper. We had a lot of, so when we looked at the suppliers and the staff, within 40 miles, we had about 60%. When we went out to about 100 miles, we had about 85%. And when we looked overall, we have about 99% of the overall costs and subs were all based here in North Carolina. The only thing that wasn't was the JV appliances, which come from the big national firms wherever they're, wherever they are. So, which is kind of fun when we did that math, because we had never done that math before. And we'll have a similar with this, because it's gonna all be local. Perfect.
And you know that's at the south end of the same runway that she's building on, like the other end.
Yeah. It's kind of fun when you look at it that way.
And the backside, that dark line down the backside is the old US Railway to the Western Electric Plant.
Really?
Yeah, there was a rail spur.
Okay. So that's why, that's why it's great. I always figure out.
Yeah, we actually see it down the property line, all the way down to the bottom of the picture.
Okay.
Mr. Black, Mr. Beasley?
Southeast corner of the property is located in Graham. What's the current zoning on it? And do you have a similar request with the city of Graham?
We do not. It's actually was, it's zoned something for the cell tower that's there. And in reality, we are not planning to have that as part of our complex because it's, it's not our business model to do cell phone towers.
Questions?
We all wrote on that map right there. You can see it coming off the rear scoop down the bottom.
That does make it fix up down more about where the bills are. Well, that makes sense. Because Graham's always been interesting. Because Graham survived without a train. In that sense, which we've always found fascinating, it's one of the few mill village type of locations that doesn't have a train spur.
I'll share a bit more about it.
With the mountain.
Questions, motion?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
How many multifamily apartments are you planning to put here?
Our thought is about 190.
How did this decide?
Seventeen and a half acres, I would imagine.
Yeah. We tend to be limited by parking.
How many floors?
Generally, there'll be three stories.
Same question that I asked her. Elevators, pool?
We may have a pool. We do not have elevators.
Do you have voice in the stairwell and people can lift heavy stuff up in that third floor?
We don't. And it's certainly a puzzle with the three-story walk-up buildings, which is generally what we're getting because that's what, as the area we can afford. Down 40, they're all three-story walk-ups. We are finding, we're probably about a third of our tenants are seniors now. And even if you do a family property, there's, that's just the demographics of North Carolina right now is we have that many seniors. Now, generally, I'm saying 55 and older. So it's been a puzzle because when she gets to second, third floors, you know, some people like to look for security, some people don't like to walk the steps upstairs.
I can't put my baby grand up there.
Yeah. It's a puzzle.
I'll help you leave.
I know, you got it. You have something you just lifted.
A question that I'd ask also for, how many bedrooms do you plan to make apartments?
We have ones and two bedrooms.
Ones and two.
And two apartments. We found generally our demographics, households are getting really small. I started doing this 30 years ago and we used to build a lot of properties for big families. And we just don't find big families or in our renters in our communities. Most of our portfolios, especially like O'Nida Mill, were averaging under one and a half people per unit. And we once do that location. We just have households that are very small. Even two bedrooms generally are one person.
Do you plan to have entrance and exits on both Hanover and Graham Hopeville?
Yes, yes. We may have two phases. I'm sorry, we may have two phases as this is going, but we won't be accessing both of those streets within this parcel of land.
Can I understand correctly, the new elevators is just because of cost?
It is. Elevators are about $60,000 a floor.
Three floors is?
Yeah, totally, yeah. And generally, you have to have, when we do elevator buildings, you have to have two elevators. So you get up to a very, it gets very expensive very fast. And then the ongoing maintenance is expensive too. Which is generally why in North Carolina, we've done three-story walk-ups. We've actually done some elevator vent buildings and they're difficult to make them work financially.
But they are marketable? Is all of it in three stories?
They are.
What you do is spiral.
Now, you have to be in a very, you have to be like downtown Winston-Salem in some places where you're charging, you know, $2,300 for a two-bedroom, where you can afford it.
And what were the prices of these vehicles? Do you have a range of?
We do not have a range. Backdoor-wise, we don't have a range of this stuff.
Mr. Vice Chair, follow-up question there. You're, you made a comment that possibly one-third will be seniors. And then is that what you're thinking because of past experience?
100% past experience. It used to be 10%. When you now look at the folks, our population, we're almost, our 55 and older is growing very fast here in North Carolina. And we're finding that in the traditional rental markets, they've, they've been coming more and more into our apartments, more than they did 20 years ago, where we mostly have younger families in apartments.
And by the way, 50,000 is not old.
And I kind of call it 55,000. No, 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 not classified.
Not that I'm getting that close or anything like that. 50,000 is not old.
And I give it up, three stories of land, so it's fine on that side. I think what we're finding quite again, sorry to answer your question in more detail, but it's a good question because as demographics are changing, we're finding a lot of folks want to stay in our communities. And this is the puzzle with seniors is in O'Nida, we have some great examples of this. People sold their houses. One of the city council members' mother actually moved, sold her house, moved into our complex because they want to stay in the local community, but they no longer want to live alone. They don't want to deal with having a house, but they still want to be in the same area. And that's why we love these urban infill ones, because you can stay in the exact neighborhood. You don't have to move out there by 85 or 40 and be in a property complex all by yourself. You can still be part of the community with these types of urban infill and destruction properties.
Any more questions, comments? Mr. White?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. I guess a question I missed, if you said, are these market rates or are these also going to be a income base?
We have not decided yet. We've historically do apartments. We do both workforce housing, which was described in the prior presentation. We also do market rate. O'Nida Mill, when we did O'Nida Mill, we went down the path of both doing affordable or doing market rate. And we spent four years working on it. And at the end, the only financial one that worked was to do workforce housing. And because the logic back then was that nobody's ever going to pay $800 for rents in Graham. And as we built it, as you guys know, as we built that complex and we were the first new apartments for 20 years in this community, another 1,400 units have been built and they're having rents that are 14, $1,500 a month. So their logic of no one's ever going to pay $800 for the Burlington market is pretty wrong. So we don't go in with any precondition as to what we're going to do. We basically see what the world is. Once we get to the point where we're ready to build them, then we decide based upon the financing, what's the best product.
Understood.
The good thing to know about it is when you're talking about a modern workforce housing property and a market rate property, they're the exact same properties. Condition, everything else other than you don't have granite countertops. You generally have stackable washer and dryers in market rate versus a family property. And you either have a pool or you don't have a pool. But otherwise, the price is the exact same. It's all things that we can all be proud of down in our communities.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Question for the staff. I noticed that you recommended this. Did anyone discuss the, any kind of weight on the school system for the elementary, middle and high school in that area for both of these projects? And/or the traffic in the area with both of these projects? Since y'all recommended it, I assume that was brought up.
So typically, as part of the rezoning request, you're not going to see a traffic impact analysis that is done at this time?
All of this, that was discussed?
The rezonings have not been discussed with them. Specifically, we do, we do advertise and send information out in terms of the property list, but we don't, we don't contact the schools specifically and get their input on the rezonings.
Okay, so.
Because in this particular situation, just like the other request, it's a limited use rezoning where there's a menu of different use types. We don't necessarily know, ultimately, the applicants are here expressing what their potential developments are. But like I mentioned with the other case, there's no commitments in terms of the specific number of units.
I understand. I guess the term multifamily kind of evokes children in my mind. Maybe it's just that probably.
Well, they're also requesting retail as well as multifamily.
I understand.
It's, most of our, everybody can kind of go to speak to them. When it comes to the schools, I believe they would take the current enrollment or anticipate. So sometimes we might get inquired from the school district, how many units have been approved or how many are existing, so they can start to anticipate the demand on their school system. But as part of our normal development review process, the school system is not a part of that, part of that process at the moment.
Is the traffic cap?
The traffic will be, once we set product, the traffic impact analysis, well, they'll come back for a pre-application conference with more refined site plan or vision of what they want to do. And that's when our transportation department will likely initiate a scoping meeting with them for any transportation impacts.
Fair enough.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I add a couple more questions that were, and this may be in the back. I'm sorry if I overlooked it. Number of parking spaces?
Again, this is something that they can commit to during the rezoning process.
Right, but the general layout of.
It's one, it usually is a parking, a parking spot and a half per unit. It's more than you're willing to.
And we've actually found that to be too much. At O'Nida, we have a lot of extra parking spots. And we always get that comment about, how come you guys don't have enough people in your parks? It's kind of like, well, we have just too many parking spots. We have a whole depot of parking spots.
That's a city deal.
That's, yeah. And I think that's one three, one and three quarters. And it was just too many parking spots for them.
Right. And also, what will be the management, what you do the apartments, will that be y'all or?
It'll be the same folks we've used, which is Partnership Property Management out of Greensboro.
That's the same people that do O'Nida?
They do O'Nida. And they do about 250 properties across this state.
And you had to explain purchasing this property? Purchasing this property?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Is there a motion? Or more discussion?
I was gonna say, somebody in the audience, phone calls?
Where I was going. Perfect, yes. Phone calls, anything?
No, we have not received any calls in this application.
Anybody in the room? Other than Mr. Boni? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve?
Read it, brother. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from Light Industrial to General Business Limited Use, G B L U. Property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Graham Hopeville Road and Hanover Road, addressed as 804 South Graham Hopeville Road and consisting of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number 172001, excluding the existing area's own conditional industrial CI 784 and the portion located within the city of Graham's jurisdiction. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential and neighborhood commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Is there a second? I will say. Roll call. Please, the governor?
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Approve.
Commissioner Black?
Approve.
Commissioner Beasley?
Aprove.
Commissioner Brown?
Approve.
Commissioners Zek Nelson?
Approve.
Motion passes with five votes in favor. And one extension of the committee's review.
Yeah, perfect. So all God's people said amen.
Mr. Vice Chair, one question I should ask just for the staff. What is currently on the property? Is this one of those local home places or is it vacant or new?
I can tell you what was there was the Southern Pride Car Wash.
There was a car wash. The car wash against there has been built.
Is that?
There's a shed.
There's shed.
There's a sheds sales place where they sell sheds.
And then there's areas where there used to be abandoned, you know, they were.
What kind of?
Yeah, loads used to be. Yeah, I was gonna say loads was.
Motion to adjourn. Hey, oh, sorry, back and forth, sorry.
You suckin' power. Don't take my media that way, can we?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
You're up.
Now I'm out for her.
Right. Thank you for that, Mr. Kirkpatrick. I do have a couple things. Commissioners need to update or make any changes with their addresses, phone numbers, if there's any. If you change the phone number or email address, needs to be presented to Congress. Are we going to do a list? I'd like to hear your report on your list there for contact information and so forth.
Yeah, definitely. I'd like to just confirm that I have your latest and newest contact information. And also, when staff goes in email informing you of the, that a meeting is upcoming, if you all can please respond back to staff either by phone or through email, that way we know whether or not you're going to be in attendance so that way we can make sure that our alternate member is, needs to come to the meeting or not. So that's just a reminder for everyone on the commission to please just respond as soon as possible. We'll give you all a couple days. Just try to, try to reach out and be proactive and have a guard. But I do have your contact information. I believe it's been updated. But I just want to make sure I have everyone's contact if I can touch base with you after the meeting.
You want to pass it around so we can?
I don't have copies of this right now, but I can, we can do that for the meeting.
Okay. All right, so stay in there, whichever, whenever we give a turn to you. So we can check our numbers. Shouldn't take but a second or two. When does the new year for commissioners start? I mean, is it June or July?
Typically in June. The terms for this year will expire June 2023 until, unless council decides to continue that. But we're anticipating new, new members and alternates whatnot to begin in July.
Okay, we're, so I was wrong, a term, like a three-year term?
Correct. I do have that term here. So I have expiration notes here as a reminder for you to know when your term is out if you want to apply.
Okay.
When you go on parole.
You go on parole. Okay. Is there any other business to come through this commission tonight? Anything from the staff?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?